I see that we have three guests we'd like to recognize here. It looks like what you guys want to speak about is not an item on the agenda. There's a place later in the meeting to speak of that. Is that okay? On to the committee reports, please.
I don't have anything right now. Pretty good.
Water and sewer.
Go ahead, Andrew.
You lead back.
I did, I led right to you.
Do you want to give an update on the, uh, force, or the, uh, the sewer?
Water main extension?
Yeah.
Uh, the basic update of that is the engineering drawings paperwork properly done and, um, it's basically here for approval. That paperwork is in your box, Mr. Bobble.
I, I, I got that email from Paula today and I couldn't see any attachment that had the permits. It was just a, a letter. Did you actually see the permits?
We were just...
This isn't the permits. This is to approve the drawings and stuff if they're going to send a DPA to get the permits.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's basically that.
Gotcha. I didn't, I didn't see the email had them attached. If there's physical copies of them, that's perfect.
Yeah, she put them in your box, actually speaking.
So we went over the drawings.
Someone must've taken them out because they weren't in there when I got here.
No, we, we, we had them in the water committee.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So we went over the drawings to make sure all the stuff was, uh, as planned.
Gotcha. And everyone's, you guys are okay with the drawings?
Yep.
So that's where that's at. Do you want to, how about the sewer project, Matt?
Pardon?
The sewer project?
Basically, what we've done is we, uh, I, I told you several meetings ago about, uh, submitting a letter to get some documentation from CN and we've received that documentation. Pretty much went through it and developed a plan where we're going to try to, uh, extend on the west side of that casing and continue to use the existing through their approval and some paperwork. And Justin, if there's something that I'm not explaining correctly, please help me there. But, uh, Justin with the Farnsworth Group here has been diligently working with them trying to get us in motion.
I think we got a plan. We got to ask for a few variances from their current specifications, but, um, you know, it's, appears that that's going to work out okay and this is the, probably the right approach, uh, at least cost approach anyway, is to try to proceed this way.
So this, this makes the most sense, but they, the river could say no, right?
Correct.
And we have to come up with a plan, the E and C and so on.
Gotcha. Anything else for water sewer? Justin, do you have anything to add or?
Uh, no, nothing, nothing else for me.
Okay, moving on. Streets and alleys.
We had a couple of things that we've obviously, with the LEAF program is after this wonderful win this past weekend has really stepped that up a notch. People are starting to get them out and we will be starting to vacuum them a little more briskly. Uh, we had one work order for a culvert replacement for, uh, on the east side of town that has since been done. Other than that, we've been working on some basically untied projects that need to be tied up for winter time. Pretty much what we've got going on there.
Matt, I meant to ask you, did you tie in that tile that, uh, culvert was coming from the north?
Yes.
Okay. It looked like you had it up, the elevation there to do it when I stopped by.
We, we tied it in so everything, instead of would do flow to the south, we tied it to make everything flow to the east.
Good deal. All right. Books keep? I did put on this agenda motor fuel tax because we spoke about it at the last meeting and you said that if then if we're going to change anything with that, do we want to cover that now or just talk about the motor fuel tax?
We can talk about it now. It's another one of the reasons Justin is here to visit us this evening.
If there's nothing else besides that, we'll just wait till that. We'll wait for the motor fuel tax to be introduced. If there's nothing else for streets and alleys.
There is one more thing. Uh, Darryl called me the other day about, I, I forgot the gentleman's name, uh, on Garden Street complaining about he had water up within a few feet of his house when it rained as well. Do you remember his name?
Uh, yeah. Orville Van Moll.
I have since looked into that. Darryl called me yesterday and it's going to look like it's going to take some jetting work, but I think we can get that solved.
Okay.
Anything else for streets and alleys? Finance?
Uh, we have a lot of tax money come in the last two weeks, forty-three thousand, eight-eighty-eight-sixteen. That does include, um, the business district taxes, seventy-seven eighty-one, eighty-two-eleven. And the only thing else I have is that we will do, be doing the levy next month.
Gotcha.
Because I'll have to have that turned in by the end of the month.
As far as I've been told, the audit has been doing okay?
I haven't heard anything, so Paul has emailed me about, with a couple of questions, but other than that, I haven't.
It should be done here. Probably the, probably approve the audit on the, on the first, hopefully the first meeting in November because that's got to be turned in by mid-December to the state, so that should be, should be.
Are they here this week or were they here last week?
They were here last week, I think. They're only here for a couple of days.
Yeah.
They were here for three days last week, I believe.
But I haven't heard of any, of them not being able to find a month. That's good. It makes the process run easy when everything's available. Trish, how often does the, uh, folks share the income tag? Does that come quarterly?
I think so. Because that's one of the bigger ones that doesn't come monthly.
Anything else for finance? Moving on to, uh, public comments for the non-agenda items. Uh, Mr. Jim King, you would like to speak?
Yes.
You have the floor, sir.
Yeah. I'm on disability and stuff and I went into the city, a place where they'd burn brush and, uh...
Sewer pond?
Sewer pond, whatever. I didn't know what you want to call it, but...
Right.
Anyway, I, uh, took some sticks out there and I also had a wooden door. Well, I didn't think nothing about it, so I put it on the brush pile to be born, burned because it's a wooden door, you know? And, uh, and, uh, he, the chief of police came and asked me to, if I could go pick it up. I said, "There's no big deal." I didn't know it was, uh, you couldn't do that. So I went and picked it up and then about four hours later, he came back and wrote me a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ticket. Well, I'm on disability. I don't have seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for, to pay a ticket. So, and that's about where I stand. I did do it. Yes, I admitted that to the chief of police, but I also reconciled it and went and picked it up and I still got a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ticket for it. So I seen what we're gonna, what they, what I decided to do about this because the deadlines, I think tonight to figure out what we're going to do about it.
Gotcha.
So, that's all I got to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tony, when we have your account, please?
Pretty much what he said, you know? I got, somebody told me that they saw him out there and saw the stuff that he dumped and I followed up with him and he said, "Yes, I did dump it out there." And I explained to him, you know, "There's a sign out there that says brush, landscape waste only." You know, nothing, nothing, no construction materials. And, uh, yeah, there was caulking tubes, but there's also hinges inside that frame, which is a real problem because I know the guys are out there with their tractors and they pick that stuff up. That's not a very cheap expense to replacing those tires or downtime. So I mean, I don't, I mean, that's, that's why I wrote the citation.
Thank you.
What, the, the door, I can understand, the caulking tubes? The tube of caulking?
Yeah, there was a, a tube of caulking tube, but it's cardboard and plastic, you know, but...
Did you, were you aware that it was illegal to dump that kind of stuff out there?
Well, I knew you wasn't supposed to dump shingles or drywall out there. It's something that'd put out a bunch of smoke or drywall, which don't burn, you know? But it was a wooden door and I didn't think much about it, you know? It was on a brush pile.
Like I said, I, I get the wooden part of it. The problem is there's hinges and screws and I know that's a big issue too.
Right.
Um, the tube of caulk, it burns, but it's not really supposed to be, construction materials are not supposed to be burned.
Okay.
For a first offense, here by my name, my name is Bob House, but, um, for a first offense, even criminally, it probably wouldn't have been that steep. Like you said, he's not arguing the fact that he's done it, but the amount of the fine, even the sign says five hundred, not seven fifty.
Well...
No, 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 I don't think there's a number on the sign. Is there? What's it say?
If this sign does say five hundred and it says first offense.
See, I, I checked with the city of Lincoln and on theirs, on their first offense, they just don't let you come back for a year.
So...
If you knew that it was seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, would you have not dumped it?
I wouldn't have dumped it if I knew it was five hundred.
But see, it's, that ordinance has been changed in two thousand and ten, so that's why.
Two thousand and ten, the sign must be outdated. This one would be waiting to go by. Seven-three-three in our code says no garbage or refuse of any kind with the exception of landscape may be dumped to the city sewer pond. That was changed in two thousand and one. And penalty, which was added in two thousand and ten, any person violating this section shall be subject to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for the first offense. The penalty shall increase for each subsequent violation.
That was two thousand and ten?
Yes.
So two thousand and ten, the, the fine amount was set by, I don't believe any of us were here then.
Spirit of the high fines probably because we don't have, like Lincoln has somebody to check you in, so they know. It's kind of hard, I would think. We, we don't have anybody to post out there to say, "Hey, you can't come back for a year." Maybe that, you know, just a little bit more. And the sign does say landscape or wrong.
I think the higher fines also because we've had people dump and it's rare that we actually catch the person who does. So it's kind of like once in a while a high fine or more frequently low.
And I was talking with Tony, this isn't something that's like a general penalty where it's determined by anyone because the, the actual seven fifty is in a different part of the ordinance code in general. It can never be higher than that. Bob, did you have anything else you wanted to add in for the conversation?
Just that, I mean, if it was posted there, if it was updated in two thousand and ten, you probably should have updated the sign, you know?
I agree. That is what, I agree with you there.
And that, that's all I got, sir.
Obviously, you're here, you know, pleading your cases as far as the amount of the sign. All, all site, all, um, fines for any citation in the city code is ultimately determined by the city council. So basically, I'm looking at you six to kind of address what he is saying. It either stays as it is or, or if you guys want to, uh, change that, you know, that power is completely up to you.
I think that's pretty stiff fine for, for that.
Joyce, how do you feel?
I agree. And if it wasn't posted out there, that's a little hard for someone who's taking something out and it says five, even though what he was doing, he wasn't looking at that sign to say, "Well, let's see, if I put this out here, what am I going to, you know?" You know, and that's not where the man was looking, you know? But it, that does need updated out there from that book.
Yes.
I think his first offense, I think, needs to be taken into consideration too. The sign saying out there what, you know, they had brush pile and what you can, um...
It does say that out there.
Put out there and what you cannot put out there is...
The sign's first.
I think we have to pay attention to.
I agree also. Also, I mean, you got to give him credit for saying, "Yes, I did do it." I mean, he could have just said, "I don't know what you're talking about." So, I, I mean, he's on disability and I just think that, uh, we need to think about that and I don't know what it, what we can do for that, but I believe it's a little stiff for, 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 for first offense.
Um, yeah. The, you know, whether or not it's a five hundred or whatever, but I mean, he picked it up. He just, you get into that balance of opening up that camera and sure everybody, you know? But I mean, he did go and pick it up. I think, I think, you know, maybe we should grant somebody way there. Be different if there was a bunch more different stuff. I mean, there was the plastic stuff in the middle, but, you know, the way he said, you know, he thought it was a burned pile, you know? That's all I can do. Didn't admit it, so...
Andrew?
The longer I'm here, the more I think the people who wrote these rules were probably smarter than I am. Is there anything besides the fine that, uh, instead of just having money go into our account could be more beneficial to the city? I, I don't know what would be involved along with community service or anything if that's more hassle.
There is a section in the general penalty about you, about that. It may also be a, um, you know, not really a sentence, but...
I think three days on the LEAF back would be appropriate.
Yeah, Bob?
I would completely do that for him. He is disabled and, uh, I wouldn't have any problems, um, helping the city out for, you know, whatever you guys decide.
I agree, okay. Drop it to the five hundred, but I, I think we, we are open the, the pendores box there.
Mike?
I agree with the sign being different, that you probably have to stick with the sign. Nobody's standing up here making the ordinances. First offense, the sign is clear about landscape waste. And I, and I, the reason I say that is because I've asked, I had some posts in the backyard. There just wouldn't post. I called Matt and I'm thinking, you know, that the tire fees, repair fees are steep. So with that said, I'm still, I'm, I'm, I'm with everybody else. We knock it down. Maybe, uh, if you're willing to help out with some stuff, maybe around, whatever, where do you guys work out?
So I think we should get that figured out. Is there anything?
If, if there is some alternative there, I think we should get the name of that out.
Would somebody like to make a suggestion of what the new fine should be?
I don't think it, I'm, I'm not, I'm maybe on the side of not changing the fine going forward, but have it posted.
I agree.
Make it clear. Put a new sign up.
I mean, that's why the sign is so steep to, to deter.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
Like I said, rarely do we catch people, but, you know?
Have you guys thought about cameras on the new farm? Does that too?
We've tried. We just, I mean, that costs a lot of money too.
There's no electricity out there.
There's no electricity, so we've been using game cameras. Not much light. It's hard to see in the dark. I mean, most time you have is at night.
I mean, you have to be in front of the handle of that, so it's a lot of leeway.
Is there another suggestion? I mean, you guys, if you guys want to change it or lower it or, or ask for some community service, now's the time. Otherwise, we move forward with it being seven-hundred-and-fifty.
Matt, is it, no, I was looking at Matt. Is there anything that could be useful for someone of you?
Come on, Matt, help me guys.
Well, Matt's got a bad opinion of this because Matt's cleaned up a lot of messes out there. So you probably not want to know Matt's opinion. Uh, there's nothing against you. It's just I've dealt with it for years and years now. Couches and recliners and all kinds of fun stuff. TVs, you know?
So that was the reason for the increase in the...
Now, that I do not know. I wasn't here at the time it was increased.
Prior to that, must have been problems with people just taking like what you're saying sofas or whatever else out there and just using it, oh, as a dump.
I would assume, without looking at the minutes, we'll never know. Why, why they decided to do it?
I make a motion. We, we sent the fine to one dollar and they helped put up the new sign.
I think that we, I think that we can vote on this, yes. Even though regardless of whether or not it's on the agenda, they're coming in, you know, for us to address this. What do you think, Andrew?
I think we could give direct... Whose ultimate authority is it to set that?
To set the fine? The city council.
So it's been set in the ordinance and that's what the city council set then? Does anybody have authority to change it otherwise?
Nobody, only you.
After the fact? After the fine, then?
You know, there's, there's not much constraint that you guys have, but you know, that's, that's clearly a good point to where it might be a, a great idea to do it after the fact. You know, why, why put the ordinances in there if you're not going to follow what your predecessors did? At the same time, he had a right to come and, you know, plead his case for, for a dropping of the, of the fine. So that's kind of where we're at. Is there a second to Darryl's motion? That motion fails. Is there anyone else would like to suggest or, 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 or move the fine other than the seven fifty?
I think taking into consideration this gentleman did go and pick up the door and he is here this evening representing and talking about what the issue is, other than people just dumping a sofa or chair or something and disappearing. We have to consider that too because this, this man has come forth and said, "I did this and I went back, I picked it up." I think we should have to consider that.
What about you think is fair, Joyce?
Uh, the fine, the seven fifty fine?
Yeah, we can be, we can make a motion for a number that you think is fair.
Well, like you said, uh, we have that in, it's not on the sign out there.
No, it's not.
It's in the book there, so if the individuals don't know that, but someone that's dumping some out, "Well, I hope I don't get caught. I don't want to be fined five hundred dollars." Well, you shouldn't have that, you know, thought in the first place.
Absolutely. Would you like, did you, would you like to suggest an amount for...
I mean, anybody may not even be interested in the Mount Blaski dump and dumping stuff out there.
I agree.
He lives here.
I agree. And that's the thing, when, when you, when someone dumps out there, you never know where they're from.
I think if it knows five hundred, I mean, I know it's not helping a lot, but...
But it is supposed to be moved out.
And then change the sign.
I would change the sign.
I would make the, at least it's a motion. I don't know if we vote on it or not, but I would make a motion to go with five hundred dollars until, only on this one time, until we get the sign updated to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollar amount.
I think that we can give, I think that we can give Tony that direction without voting.
What about working it off? Is that an option?
Until we come up with a solid idea, I, I don't want to say that's the case and then we not come up with an idea and I'll agree with it. If, if there's something that we think is appropriate, we can give that after the fact, maybe.
I would, I would think you could do that after the fact as well. That could be worked out, whether or not, you know, the word, the work could go against the five hundred, you know, and we, we can make that direction as we go, you know? That doesn't have to be voted on. Okay, that's what we'll do. I would like to thank Tony for following up and I, I know this is a difficult thing. Thank you for sharing your job and, and following through what the ordinance is saying.
Thank you. Yep. So we'll lower it to five hundred and work something out to pay off.
Lower five hundred and now, at, at the direction of Mr. King and Mr. House, if you guys can come up with something that you think might, the city might need and approach Mr. West, he can relay on that information.
You guys know more what the city needs, but I can offer my labors, best I can do, I mean, at the moment.
Okay. That, whether or not your labor will be accepted is under the direction of Mr. Presswood?
Understood.
So if you, if you wanted to contact him about that as well? Otherwise, the fine should be due in seven days?
Yeah.
Since it was, I mean, it was, it's been due now.
Right.
And then we'll go ahead and grant this extension, so...
So next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday. Okay? I apologize if this was not the decision that favored you the most, but at the same time, it was a decision that was made, so...
So, so the decision is, what, five hundred dollars?
Yes.
I got seven days to pay it.
Yes. We also, we were, we are, we also entertain the idea of, of public service and so in these next seven days, if you guys can coordinate something with Mr. West and Mr. Presswood, that can go against that. You know, what, I think the best idea thing to do would come up with an hourly rate and, you know, you can, you can work an hour and put it and go against that fine.
I, I don't even think it needs to be that specific. If, if there's something that you see in the town that you think would be much better if it was fixed or taken care of or whatever it is and you got some idea like that, some project that, that we're...
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, would that be Matt Presswood?
Yes. You can just contact City Hall and leave a message.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Okay. Also, I have Jewel King about sidewalks?
Yeah. Um, I live down on Cook Street. I have a disabled child. They came out and painted in front of it yellow because I'm nursing. Um, they had marked the tree in front of my house to trim it and, um, I brought it up to the, the girl that you pay water bill to. Anyways, it, what was going on with the tree? Um, it's torn up the sidewalk in front of my house to the extent that someone's probably going triple rip.
Okay.
My daughter being handicapped, I would like to see about getting that sidewalk fixed. I talked to Trick Moody and they do not want to cut it down. They don't think that's what's tearing up the sidewalk. So I'm fine with leaving the tree, but I think the sidewalk still needs fixed. She said I would pretty much have to come up here and half of the bill would be mine. So obviously, I know that it's, ain't going to happen till it's springtime, but I would like it kind of put into the matters.
Absolutely. What's your address?
Three fifteen West Cook Street.
Three fifteen. Can you guys go look at that sidewalk? Three fifteen West Cook.
Will do.
Thank you.
Is that on the north side or south side?
It's right across from the high school.
Yeah.
It's where Zachary's teacher lived.
Any other public comments on the non-agenda items? We will move on to the appro, approval of the consent agenda, which includes approval of the bill.
J M Habit and Associates, fifteen hundred area, BDC, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars, fifty-seven cents. B Consulting, six hundred thirty. Brian Johnson Trucking, nine hundred eighty-two dollars, seventy-two cents. Cat Financial, one thousand four hundred twenty dollars, eighty-seven cents. Farnsworth Road, three thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars, fifty cents. IMB, two thousand one hundred twelve dollars, twelve cents. IMB Visa, eight hundred forty-three dollars, seventy-nine cents. Mount Blaski, CUD, number twenty-three, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. RMA, IO Municipal League, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy dollars and thirty cents.
Hey, Matt?
Yes, sir.
What's this, uh, the truck repair?
Truck repair. I'm sorry.
Which truck? Down the bottom there.
The O-five Jason Wade.
Yeah, it's the truck that Josh drives. Radiator went complete.
Okay. And what, what, what do you know about the Jason Wade? Is this like a, has he got a...
He's a local guy.
Shop?
Has a shop.
Shade Tree mechanic or...
Well, we was trying to get a, we, we went to Barry's, Barry's shop for repair on my truck and the consensus was is his numbers were a little high, so in the interest of keeping it local, we went to another guy's working shop, so...
It's okay.
Any other questions on the bills? Not only entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Miscellaneous motor fuel tax.
Ah, so I guess Matt presented the quotes last week?
Yes.
Um, ace in the hole, after they adjusted it, they were still low at seventy-nine cents a foot. Um, so Matt indicated that the interest would be likely to move forward with that, with the little bid. Um, originally we quoted it just to get a number out there of ten thousand lineal feet. So that'd be seventy-nine thousand. Your, uh, estimate form that we submitted to I dot was for fifteen thousand dollars worth of crack sealing. Um, so you could spend ten percent over that with doing nothing else, so you'd be able to spend up to sixteen thousand five hundred on crack sealing with ace in the hole if that was the direction you wanted to take. And by the procurement, the M F T procurement, you could spend up to twenty-five thousand. And I, I would have us go back and address that form. But we could, uh, the council's direction was you could spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
What was the number without Maggie James seventeen?
Sixteen, sixteen thousand five hundred, cause we had originally said fifteen thousand, so we can just spend ten percent.
And that would do ten thousand linear feet?
So sixteen thousand five hundred would do just over twenty thousand lineal feet.
Any idea how many blocks that is?
So I just, I just, we measured just one of them out here just to get a ballpark for when we were figuring it. And one block on the square and with the square being about, you know, sixty-eight to seventy feet wide, is about fifty-five hundred lineal feet.
For, for one hole? We do, we do the center and each?
Yeah, so it'd be curb to curb, one, one block. And that was, that amount of those may be the worst one and a couple of them are kinda like that. So I think you maybe figure about five thousand ballpark per line, uh, per block.
Are we restricted to do it in that area or, or do we have the flexibility to do it anywhere in town?
I think the way we had, we did tell them it would be concrete streets and we told them it would be centered around that. I think we may have a little bit of issue, we could confirm with them if we did something entirely different.
So it would still be concrete streets, it's just we have concrete streets elsewhere in town that are possibly in more need of repair.
Sure, I, I talked to him today before I came here just to make sure one more time that he was good. And I think he's, concrete streets to him, or it's con- concrete streets.
No matter where it's at in town.
Uh, that's my understanding, I mean, you know, we kinda had originally told him they'd be sorted together, I think he might balk a little bit if we're gonna do a thousand feet here and then a thousand feet over here. I, I can't, I can't speak for him, but, um, that, that wasn't what we.
Well, if we're gonna do a block, we're gonna do a whole block, so I mean, it's gonna be at least five thousand.
He would like to start if it's approved this evening tomorrow morning. Um, so, I mean, he's ready to get going if, if the council so chooses.
Council, the council approved the motor fuel tax resolution, so I think if, if we're good to move forward, you know, actually, we were having this conversation because we changed it a little bit, didn't we? After the bids come out, that's why we need to talk about it.
Yeah, so really, uh, dude, to just accept the quote, you would be spending what, a seven thousand nine hundred dollars? Would that be the ten thousand feet? Um, so which is, the, the ten thousand feet is the units we told I dot and we thought it would be about a dollar fifty a foot.
Okay.
So if you wanna stay at the fifteen thousand or the sixteen five hundred, at the new unit price, that's where you get the additional units.
So we have, that we have to approve?
Yeah, so it's just, uh, I think really we just, uh, the council should make a approval so we can tell ace in the hole who wants to start tomorrow morning. What, where, how much to do?
I would, I mean, I'm in favor of going up to that sixteen thousand five hundred.
Oh my.
Is there anybody against that?
No.
Alright. Secondly, uh, I know we had some work planned out for around the square and I'm okay with doing that. Matt, I would, I would really like you to take this map or one similar and go around the concrete streets in town and find the worst, like that don't have anything in the cracks. And let's, you know, whatever we have left over, target those.
Leftover from working up here, if there's a leftover from working up here?
Well, I'm, I'm of the firm opinion that there's places around town, concrete streets that need it worse than the square even. And that's like, like, I would, I would rather concentrate on the worst ones that don't have anything in the cracks than give the square a second coat where it's maybe not as needed.
And we also have some areas on the square that need to be worked on hopefully next year, right?
Yes.
So why put it there and then tear it out next year? You're gonna, you're gonna lose some of your money there.
I think you need to look around the schools first.
For the high school, one's really bad.
Yeah.
You know, where the public is. Tell them to come to high school then.
Yep.
And this is just my, my opinion, I'm not, can't speak for him, but I think the square is probably more difficult to do than a, than a more, cause you know, this, he's gonna go, he's not even able to go one way and then back the other, he's, it's gonna be probably three or four passes. Which is, is more work for him and more setup anyway. Um, so I think if we were to do something that wasn't the seventy foot wide and more of a traditional street, he would probably be more than happy to accommodate that. And, uh, you know, the unit price you got is, is quite low really. So it does, to me, it does make sense to spend what you were planning to spend, that, you know, just sectioned out to that sixteen five. And, and you're gonna spend that money that you, the full amount that you were planning to spend and get the additional units, cause I don't know that you'll ever see a unit price like that again.
Right, okay.
Who makes sure that's ten, who makes sure that it's ten thousand feet or somebody got their tape measure? Max? Max in the measuring wheel?
We're gonna put Bill on the measuring wheel.
And, and that's, and so there's truly two ways of quoting these projects, you can either do by the foot or by the pound. And, um, Bill at, at his direction early on, I think we did by the foot because that means he can go out there with a wheel and, and, and say, okay, this is, you know, we got another thousand dollars that's due. And that's why, why we did it that way.
So do we need to put that in a motion?
Yes, we do, I would, yeah. I would entertain a motion to accept the bid of A one.
Ace in the hole.
Ace, ace in the hole and increase the allowable amount to sixteen thousand five hundred dollars as the motor fuel tax resolution states. Would that be about?
Yep.
The motion that we need?
Perfect.
I'll make that motion without saying all that. There's not a lot there.
And, and increase, Matt, and increase the amount of, amount done to the, to the full motor, to the full M F T resolution.
Sixteen five.
Sixteen thousand five hundred.
Daryl's.
Everything he said.
Any other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Uh, does anybody have any reason to go to executive session?
No, but I do have a couple other miscellaneous items.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the recycling, uh, we do have a third dumpster now, we got the pricing figured out. There was some pictures of it all being full, we also have a TV that we dumped there. Matt, I'm asking that like as part of, like a weekly check or something, if you could drive by and make sure the area is halfway clean, as far as a TV.
Can I bring one too?
That sucks and if we find a person, I think seven hundred fifty dollars is appropriate.
Really, there's TV upstairs behind the building, so you're going.
Could we grab that and, and we'll take it in our next electronics recycling?
We'll store it at, uh, down on Illinois Avenue, right across from Legion Home, I think it'd be a great place to store it.
I know a wife that would be willing.
Uh, we wasn't asking her. I'll make sure it goes away and gets the electric, I guess I'll put it in my backyard till next year.
You can leave it out there.
No, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that because what, what I seen there last week was horrendous.
It's only other stuff or just being overly full?
I, I, I think they missed a dump, in my opinion, because it's never filled, filled that quickly before.
Your dumpsters were full?
Yes. And stuff on the ground, because they were full.
Now, isn't it, can't we call them if they're full and they will come, uh, more frequently than what the schedule?
When I noticed it, that's when I started to put the wheels of justice in motion because I knew that was not right.
Right.
Paula got on the horn, it was dumped the next day.
I haven't seen, uh, the last couple times it's dumped, it's been like half day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to judge it, I'm sure.
We've been down there a couple times, but it's always about half.
I don't know, I'll try to keep a better eye on it and see like, make sure they are dumping, uh, when they dump it, whatever.
Just on Friday.
You're talking about the ones down by the, where they were before, right?
Yes.
Every time I've gone down there and taken things down there, they're, I look at them, okay, which one am I putting in paper in and what am I?
Doesn't make any difference.
Same now on that, so.
Right, and I'm like, did someone miss, missed it maybe and dumped it on the ground?
Not this night?
Don't really know what happened.
No.
Oh my.
And again, can you please paint over the signs that say no plastic, no glass on the one, our dumpster? That's confusing.
Yeah, I don't know what's down. I don't know what's going on over there. Yeah, that's what they said, in Lincoln, and they were getting out of it, I don't know. It was in a Lincoln Curry.
Getting out of the load, the joint solid waste?
And dissolved it.
Recycling. I don't, I never read it about one time.
They tried it very long, they're already gonna stop doing that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're splitting back up then, yeah.
Are they gonna rejoin that?
I don't, all I know is that, uh, that I read somewhere, it was, I don't know if it's, but
In the Curry.
They're splitting back up and I got a bill. My parents' house is up there, we used to pay the, pay that for them. Now it's split back up, they got it used again, so we gotta pick it out a lot, and I don't know the details.
Gotcha.
But I know it's split up again now.
Gotcha.
In Lincoln, they've got two different barrels, you, they take one up Saturday and Monday, February or something. But anyway, uh, they have to tag that right onto the, the, the water bill, the, the store bill looks right.
I, I had one more thing, uh, rental inspections, we're, we're doing some of those, I, I had a question brought up that I wanted to kind of get a resay on. Say I have a house that I let a family member live in. Is that a rental and does it require a rental inspection?
I'll put my two cents on that.
I welcome it.
It should be inspected, it's not owner occupied, it needs to be inspected. That's my opinion.
Okay.
The only way to know if they're, Mike, do you have something?
Well, um, when that was all brought up, that was part of the reason for putting that, getting that put together was to make sure that the, if you weren't renting it, but it was not owner occupied, that it should be inspected.
Right.
Going back that long now?
No.
Otherwise you don't have shot master.
Right, I mean, I know, I know that like taxes for a rental house are higher whether the tenant is paying rent or not, it doesn't mean.
I don't think that as a tenant see like, I'm gonna do it worse than.
Sure they would.
Better renter would, so.
I can see that side, I, I was coming from it, I first thought of it differently is, you know, if it's my house and I own it and I wanna let somebody live in it, you know. It's kinda my, if I want it to be a crap hole, it's my right as a, I own the property and if somebody wants to live there for free. I, I don't know. If, if the original intent was to even inspect those, once again, I think the people that came was probably in the problem. Alright, so we will have if, even if it's family owned and there's somebody's not paying rent.
Do you think it is not owner occupied?
Okay.
I got, I got a question for Matt.
Yes.
How often do you get a bunch of stuff dumped out there without a problem?
Oh, probably this year alone, probably close to a dozen times.
Okay.
We could take for a set of cameras pretty quick that way.
That, I was just gonna say, they make cameras very cheaply now, they're night vision and you can use solar backup with a battery. It'd be very inexpensive to do. Can I look into that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now we help you out and then have you, and there's any dumping, go back in the place and whack for you.
Fair enough.
So that's something that I thought of as too, like we lock the gate, but there's also like, uh, electronic locks and stuff, I don't know, but we get people who wanna go out there after hours and dump stuff, which usually is a problem, but it's more of a pain to get a key. I don't know if we can update it.
Well, lately here, huh, the past couple of months, it's just been mysteriously unlocked and mysteriously locked at different times of the day. Didn't quite figure that out, but, pardon?
During the summer we do.
Okay.
I mean.
And work, me working like I did, and Matt always told me, it's usually almost always open when a guy is working and tries to do it in the evening, and it was hard for me to get out there to, to.
And that's a lot of the reasons why we kinda, you know, extended those hours because, you know, there's people that like really saying, you, you work odd hours, they only got an X amount of time to do it. I can accommodate their, you know, to help. But when I was out there Sunday morning to unlock it and open it up and I'm getting a call at ten o'clock in the morning, hey, the gate's locked. Oh, wait a minute, I was just out there two hours ago, three hours ago, how is it locked? You know, someone's messing with me, I just haven't caught it. That's where your idea would come into play really, really nicely.
Yeah, you could have a little Carlos, very easy.
Five hundred dollar fine paid for a new camera.
Yeah.
Seven hundred fifty dollar pay a lot fast.
Just not yet, I'll look into it.
Yeah, thank you really.
Lorax is the brand that we put in the gym, the ones that we got, even a little cheap because we didn't have a lot of money to deal with at the beginning.
I got night owl, I got night owl in my house, in my garage.
Yeah, they're pretty, definitely need to go a step further than what we did. On clarity anyway.
The last thing I wanted to bring up was that, uh, just to reiterate, people who, if they're gonna run again, you need to get their packets sent in.
We need to get it turned in December tenth. Before Kelly delivers them the weekend of December tenth or something like that.
Uh, no, I have till January, but the cutoff time is, I don't remember the exact date.
It's on, it's on the packets.
Yeah, I have until, I have to make up the form once I get them all back in and everything checks out.
Is anybody planning on not running?
I would not be seeking reelection.
Okay.
Uh, I got some plans I plan on doing.
Okay.
I've got a question on it, so I'll take this to.
You gotta get it notarized and then, and then turn it back into City Hall and Kelly, Kelly will know it after that.
Hang on a second.
No.
I dropped, Shelley dropped it off today, she gave it back to me, so I'm gonna take it to Lincoln, to the courthouse.
What is, is that the economic interest thing? Well, I've never had to take it to Lincoln, usually I fill it out and give it to Paula.
Yeah, to take it for the packet.
So the first time.
Before you get the packet turned in, you have to take that to Lincoln, yes.
So I'm gonna do this third day. So.
That is true, you do have to go to the courthouse.
Whenever you're running.
Okay, so they'll give me a packet?
The packets are here. And it's got one of those statements that we call the interest in it.
Okay. So I will have to run, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, you will.
Yes, cause you, um, actually it's with Utterbacks, your, his, his term is up, so I guess you will, you will run, so.
It's every two years, is that correct?
Yours is on a two-year expired, I believe.
No, after he runs, I think it'll be four years, right?
One of them is four years, I thought.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to get, I have no idea.
You wanna, uh, we can look at a packet afterwards.
Yeah, I say I have what's on there, the wards, what's, what's in each ward, what's open in each ward.
Hey Matt?
Yes.
I had some thoughts.
Yes.
When we were ready. Um, I started thinking a little more about this, having help. That's really opening a big liability thing is what I'm thinking, you know. I, I understand and it would be great, you know, maybe to help work it off. But to have them up around the shop or on the streets.
No, I, I mean, I, I don't think it'd be something where they'd be part of the crew, I mean.
I just, uh.
I was thinking more like they'd go plant flowers and.
Right, right.
I just don't want something to come back and, like, because, you know, they could injure or something like that.
If they bust a knee plant.
We just paid sixty-seven thousand dollars for our yearly insurance, so, I mean, if they get injured, I can, we can recover. Actually, it didn't go up at all. It was the exact same. It's the first time in like six years that.
I don't think I can think of it, it's not really comfortable, you know.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
I'm making that.
Is there, uh, is there any other miscellaneous business?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it's, uh, an email about the guy digging holes.
Yes, I got that as well. I, I, I haven't driven by there and seen it and the picture that was on there is not a predic.
Does anybody know, can we just go down and tell them like, when you're doing this, fill the holes? I, I don't think it needs to be a big issue.
No.
I will talk to him, I will, I will talk to him.
Isn't it?
His house?
It's his mother's.
He's digging on city property. Okay. And I believe, I, there's also a concern of him doing that without calling Julie, or without calling Julie. Please mention that to him as well, I'm sure you will.
I would say our recommendation is to call Julie, but if he wants to take it.
It's on him.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I don't, I don't.
Like I said, I don't, I don't know if Julie would raise it, people do that everywhere, all the time, they, you know, so we'll eat the leak, it's wrong, whether or not they would push it, I doubt. Until there's gas going on. Or the gas.
A lot of time, like, cable going.
Yeah, that's, the real, the, yeah, the real concern is that and it's just gonna be really expensive for him if he does got it, so.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, well, in the meeting.